Eight facilities. I'll be running this section. Mr. Plattenberg?
Thank you very much, Ms. Schultz, members of the school board, Dr. Garza. We're really excited this evening. I know it's been a long, long day for each and every one of you, but we wanted to come before you and talk a little bit about some success stories that we have going on. I have the privilege and the honor to introduce Mr. Brian Sands, who is the Chief Operating Officer, sitting to my right with Synergistic. And in the audience, we have a number of people, and if you wouldn't mind standing as I introduce you really quickly, we have Mike Gulott with Synergistic, James Newkirk with Synergistics, Jack Bullock, who's an engineer. If you wouldn't mind staying standing while I introduce everybody, that'd be great. Mike, you can hop back up, brother. Jack Bullock's helped us a lot with some engineering deficiencies he's identified and working with our team, getting outside engineers, working with inside engineers. Really, it's we've been lifting the lid, if you will, of a number of our facilities and working with our teams to identify things that may be working but maybe need to be fine tuned a little bit. And in working together as a team, we've been able to identify some things that we really are fortunate to have, just really, we were taking a look at it. Then we have a number of folks that are working with us on staff, which is Warren Jenkins, Justin Moss. I can't say enough about Justin, but I think he, there he is, has been doing a great job with the data and the analytics force and the metrics. Mike Coughlin, of course, the Director of Facilities Management, just really, there's leadership on this and making sure that we're working together. A lot of times when outside vendors come in and work, they're not embraced like family. The way this Synergistic program works is if we act like a family, an extended family, the FCPS family, because it's through that behavior modification, the acculturation process that makes this thing work. In addition, we have Henry Miller, we have John Lingenfelter, we have Deborah Mays, Eric Johnson, Molly Fox, and Sarah, if you wouldn't mind standing up again as well. All of these folks are the energy specialists that really are the boots on the ground, if you will, the people that are having the relationships with our principals, with our administrators, with our teachers. We've come such a long way from issues and problems that I inherited when I first began here of teachers and individual classrooms being too hot, too cold. We had some growing pains, some learning curves at the beginning, but really, these folks, because they care, have made a huge difference, and it truly is reflective of the FCPS cares. So I just wanted to take a minute and introduce. I know it's been a long time. I want to thank each and every one of you for what you all are doing collectively as a part of our extended team, because it does take all of us working together to make FCPS the best it can possibly be. So with that, Brian, I think you've got a brief presentation.
Jeff, if I could add one more thing?
Sorry?
If I could add one more thing before we get into a presentation, I'm really excited about you all hearing a little bit more about this partnership. You all know that we've been at this together for almost a year, so we've not ever had the opportunity for you all to hear the presentation. This is important, because we've actually, any monies that we can save from any of our energy costs goes right back into our budget. So you all remember the last couple of years, we've actually recognized some savings in our budget, even though it was early in the process, we've already begun to have some, to see some of the benefits from the partnership, although there's a lot more we can continue to do, and I think you're going to hear about some of that today. But this is a very good partnership. We also know that we have to work on our communication. We don't want our teachers to be uncomfortable, that's not the purpose at all. It's really effectively managing our systems. Early on, I think we were challenged with, we have systems that break down, we know that, we have HVAC systems that are old, we talked about how much major maintenance were backlogged on, and sometimes when those things would happen, people would think, oh, it's because of Synergistics, because we're trying to save our energy. So we really have had to work on the messaging and the communication, and I think we're in a really good place, and I really appreciate the work that Jeff and all of his team have done on this, but our partnership with Synergistics, we really appreciate you, and I know our board's going to be excited to hear this good news story, so it's all yours.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garza, and members of the board, and the leadership team as well. We really are excited about being here. I know it's been a long day for you, so we'll move through this material and certainly give you plenty of time for questions and associated answers. One quick question, do we want to go ahead and pull the video? Okay, so see if we can move forward here. There we go. So if we can launch this. So we've got a quick video that's been distributed to staff we thought we'd lead with, Dr. Garza, and some thoughts from her, as well as one of our energy specialists.
Hello, I'm Karen Garza, Superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools. We have taken advantage of a great opportunity by partnering with Synergistic to reduce our energy consumption and save considerable amounts of money in the funds I hope we can use for important district initiatives.
The Synergistic process, validated in independent studies and results for more than a quarter century, inspires an institution-wide commitment to sustainability through organizational behavior principles and team-building methods. The company offers a combination of two-
What we're going to go ahead and do is, we're going to go ahead and bypass this. This was distributed in one of our fan-outs, which has been renamed, and we had sent it out to everybody, and it really does present the message well. It's a great kickoff from Dr. Garza, and really, if you take a look, you can find it online in addition. It really highlights not only really just the intro Dr. Garza does, it talks about the importance of it, which you basically just heard, so that's why I'm not going to worry about the technology support. But it really does showcase on what's going on out in the schools, what really is happening by the work that they're doing together, both our maintenance folks with the Synergistic energy specialists, with our administrators, our principals, and their staffs. So it really just articulates that in a different vein, but it really isn't different than what you heard from our introduction. So, Brian, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Let me speak a little closer here. So what we'll do is move quickly past this. What I'd like to do is simply just give you a brief overview of some of the foundational aspects of our contract relationship with FCPS, and so we'll push through these slides rather quickly and move on to some of the economics and associated metrics of success. But the organization of Synergistic, formerly Energy Education, is originally established in 1986. We've got a significant presence with both the energy footprint that we manage and monitor over the United States, particularly in the K-12 environment, with typically a success story around the 26% reduction in energy level. The seven consecutive years of Energy Star recognition is an independent assessment from the Department of Energy that indicates another separate level of authority that gives us some indication of the success or failure that the programs lead from one year to the next. We have some great news at the end of this presentation, how you rank on that independent assessment, we'll get to in a moment. You know, the 22,000 buildings and associated management that we have around the United States and 48 states, they're not any one the same, and so the account that's established here and the partnership we're building with your organization is really a custom-level approach. One of the reasons that we've moved through in a pragmatic step over the last few months, as you indicated, Dr. Garza, over the past year, and it really is on the foundation of this slide, which is an indication of kind of a three-legged stool that's represented by a concept that we call active building management. The behavioral science component is really the link with the occupants of the building that we engage in in a long-term partnership that builds sustainability. There's often many ways to save energy that are associated with mechanical retrofits and associated new types of construction. We don't dismiss that, but we also know that by engaging with the client at the building level of the personnel that are actually utilizing that facility every day, we can engage in a long-term solution. Another part of that three-legged stool is optimization as well as technology. We're a technology-centric type of organization in the sense that we don't sell you equipment, we're highly engineering-based, and we push through with a sense of an approach that gives us the ability to build and partner with you at both the technical, facility level, and never forget the fact that we're really engaged with every person that's engaged in your sites, educators, operation personnel, and everybody in between. So the concept that's most fundamental is at the base of this pyramid. This is something that was established through Dr. Dennis Buffington at Penn State University to help establish a concept of the layers of conservation and savings that can be attributed, and it moves from the base at the bottom, which is where our core model operates, which is really, we inherit the systems you currently have, the facilities and the age and the infrastructure, and we build operational efficiency from there without costing you capital dollars. That's the blue portion of the pyramid that's really the foundation, and the associated tiers above that end up becoming recognitions of other opportunities to save. The second tier up, energy efficiency, is when you replace equipment, put in more modernization, even update and structure facilities in different ways with lighting and HVAC and other types of proprietary or other types of methods. But that's built on what we believe to be a foundation of running what you have efficiently with as little capital expenditure as possible. The next level we're talking about is an energy demand. That's really electrical, and it's associated with when energy is utilized during a day as opposed to the total energy used in a building. That's a strategy and a method to save and conserve as well. And then moving up to the top of this pyramid, which is an efficiency measure, which is renewables, which is a very positive and beneficial, green-type environmental efficiency measure, but often has challenges associated with subsidies and other types of challenges on the valuation and cost side. So again, our foundation begins at the bottom of this pyramid, and then we engage with whatever level we can as you inherit and engage in other layers of opportunities of savings as you move up this pyramid. Moving to the efforts to date, this is a quick summary of the efforts that's been expended. We've basically been online since February of '14, pushing aggressively, certainly since about July and August, with a full staff of energy specialists and consultants on the ground. We have 10 original dedicated energy specialists. We currently have eight in the posting process for two replacements, one of which we hope to be targeted more at an engineering-level onsite position that's a little more advanced on the engineering to help with some of the interface between the engineering you have currently in-house, as well as construction and your major projects. So we're going to move that staff forward with additional two replacements. We've had equivalent of 750 full-time employee days with our consulting staff on since that year, almost a constant churn, not only of a full-time project manager, some of you may have met Tom Dilberti, he wasn't able to make our meeting today, but I was on vacation, but he's an onsite constant resource to help with our project management, our energy specialists you briefly met. We have a number of efficiency measures moving on that include training, partnering with some of your facility staff, with Jeff and some of his technical staff as well, to help move some of that equipment-based opportunity forward as quickly as we can, and certainly with what we call building automation systems. There's a bullet up there, a couple of them actually, that refer to the way in which we can remotely and locally control climate and lighting levels, and those are key to building some sort of operational efficiency model as we move ahead. So we're actively engaged in solutions around some of your aging infrastructure, as well as some of your newer systems. Okay? This was just a quick review of what you just met quickly with our energy specialists. Continual presence in buildings, the one-on-one relationship that's referenced is a key to our partnership with the staff that's in those buildings. We see phenomenal results moving in that area. They match a series of operational times, what we call occupied and unoccupied time periods. They try to make sure that we're maximizing the efficiency and use of the buildings mostly in the after-hours, weekends, holidays, while they engage with your clients during your occupied periods. It's the fundamental parts of our process model, but basically, it's to promote an energy culture. The sustainability side of what we do ultimately is associated with how we make this program really your program, not that we can continue to staff this up and carry it on our back as long as this is initiative based on the board, but really the long-term success of what you can also build over time. As a complement to that, one of our strategies that's indicated in this Westfield High School study is a strategy that we call sort of an incremental approach. You have a small number of extremely large facilities that cost a great deal in the sense of your total expenditures. One of our strategies, as we began to get more and more knowledge of the challenges in FCPS, was to look at the largest cost centers and assess from an engineering perspective what we might be able to move as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible on savings. The Westfield High School study is what we call an assessment of 10 or more of your largest facilities, largely high schools, and in this particular case, we estimated that in an annualized basis, we could save about $100,000 by initiating a series of efficiency measures. We've now, in seven to eight months, met $112,000 in savings in that site alone, and now it's my understanding from some of the engineering this morning that we've now almost completed 10 or more of the sites that were targeted that are mirrored by this particular site, and we're pushing through to completion on that literally in weeks. The other side of that incremental approach is to now move on into some of your elementaries and other challenges that again have everything from controls and infrastructure and slightly different issues, but we're very optimistic that we're going to progressively see those issues.
I thought was fascinating, some of the studies that you all have provided us have compared, excuse me, I'm having some kind of allergy reaction today, compared two very, you know, exactly the same facilities. In some cases, we have the same footprint in a number of different places, and yet the utility costs, energy costs, could be radically different. And so that's been a fascinating study, and Westfield is an example of that, where we had South County, which was the exact same floor plan, and so really what it got down to is really training that site, the building manager, and just whomever's in charge of systems, to better manage the system so that it's reflecting the needs at the time.
Absolutely. Great follow-up on that in the sense that we're very proud of what our engineering staff, particularly Jack Bullock and others that have been in on a continual basis, that give us an opportunity to really determine what is unique in your facility challenges, and then proactively and then pragmatically move through it. We don't want to disrupt your core mission, which is education and your relationships with the children and the community. We have to be careful as we move through this, and quite frankly, it's been a little slower than we would like as we move through the economics, I'll show you that, but a very, very solid success story as we move forward. So we're very optimistic, we're going to gain very significant ground in the near term. And this graphic actually starts to show that. So what I'm showing you now is a series of slides that are breaking some of your sites and some of the facility types into some assessment. So the blue line is indicating your high schools and some of the progressive changes in savings that have moved up from about an eight and to a 12 and 13% savings level over the last several months. You can also see in the red, all sites collectively, separate from a few of those that are under major construction, we separated those. You can see again, a major trend moving forward to indicate that we've got traction and momentum moving with these sites, and we can certainly assess these on a granular to global basis. But this is one indication that we've got significant progress moving forward. A quick assessment of that means, what do we do to monitor and measure, and is that process strategic in the sense, but as well as quality and integrity and depth and control? This is just a quick graphic that indicates measurement and verification as a process, as a partnership with your accounting, your finance, facilities, planning and project issues associated with new construction. We've got significant resources wrapped around that to make sure that you, in a layer of your leadership as well as your administration, understand that when we give you numbers and performance data, you have confidence in that. So it may be questions later on that, but I did want to insert that we have a very systematic and targeted approach to the way we monitor and measure this series of data, the valuation of your energy, and the rest of the associated measurement process. Okay, so a quick overview, this is a pie chart simply showing what your costs as a function of percent are. You're about 76 to 80% electric, it's not, that wouldn't be a total shock, except that drives management of facilities. We can manage irrigation and water and a variety of other utilities, and we do that with our process model, but we often start with the most significant part of your total cost expenditure, and that is electric and natural gas in this account, and it's nothing more than that in the sense that you know your budget numbers, and I think this is fiscal year 13, 14. Okay, another graphic that shows another method of assessing success and the value at which we're moving. What you can see here is a baseline is basically your 2013 calendar year with a slight shift in months, February to January is kind of the fiscal cycle. The point is, you'll see the blue line is a baseline of basically your electrical consumption use district-wide, excluding a few of these buildings that are under massive construction. The red line is effectively when the energy specialists and the Synergistic process began to take hold, you can see a dramatic drop in electrical usage. It parallels a number of your other utilities as well, and then it carries across, and the green downline is an aggressive continuation of that lowered performance. So what we're looking at here is a reduction in basic electrical use across the district, and that's a great success story. What we need to do is continue that momentum and accelerate that across the different types of buildings between elementary, juniors, middles, high schools. This is a district-wide assessment. Another metric, the line graph that is trending left to right is your use per square foot of major utility types. What that means is, as we monitor buildings, literally at the square footage of usage, you've got a similar trend that's tracking this overall usage trend. Again, another metric of success to indicate that we've got traction and we're moving forward. The bar graphs are indicating a little bit more, you've got three months of February, March, and April that would map to this February, March, and April, and you can see, April has got a significant reduction, and we've begun to drop all the other two as well. So in the last three to four months, we have very significant reductions in usage across the board. This is a grouping of top-site performance. One more metric, basically, your red graph is buildings that are now attaining over 20% savings. So as this line, as this bar graph or a line that would superimpose begins to go up, that means we're increasing the number of buildings that are hitting 20% or better, and the blue is 15% or better. So we've got progressive growth in all areas of the buildings moving. Our goal is 18-plus percent, that's our minimum where we want to maintain, and certainly we're now validating that we can hit in that 20-plus percent range. Okay? This is a valuation trend of the dollars saved over time, again, starting from February of '14 forward. We had a six-month window that we refer to as Quick Start. That's a period of time where we try to get as many of our personnel on as possible to learn your buildings, learn your culture, partner with personnel. Over that period of time, we were just under $1 million, about $800,000. By August, we'd hit about $1 million in reduced costs. We're currently moving into the 3.4 at this point, is recorded in April, and our projection is 4.5-plus in this calendar year, or this fiscal year. So we think that's substantial progress. We're still a little bit under what we would hope for. I think our original projections was about 6.6 million, but we have great optimism that as we go into the second year, we're going to begin to hit that and exceed. This is a simple roll-up of the type of utilities that are driving that 3.4. Basically, electric is the high, that 80 or 78% total expenditures is where our biggest opportunities are, but we're engaged in all the other fuel types as well, and it's simple breakdown of the time period of the Quick Start versus our current performance Energy Star. An Energy Star is projected from the Department of Energy as an ability for K-12 and a variety of other types of entities, K-12 in particular, to rank themselves against their peers nationwide. The largest number of certifications last year, I think perhaps in '14, certainly moving into '15, is in the 40 range. You're currently at 130-plus. This is the updates today, we believe we'll get to 140. You're actually leading the nation almost by three times of what your buildings are certified as efficient in this last 12-month window. This is a very big deal. Los Angeles Unified, with over 2,000 campus sites, is the only one ahead of you, with almost 10 times the square-footage footprint as an opportunity. We're going to continue to push through the final numbers on this, we believe it'll exceed 140. I believe that may be an opportunity, I think we're planning on in maybe September, pushing some additional information on that and perhaps a district-wide update or celebration. But the Energy Star recognition is another level of independent assessment of the level of efficiencies that you're gaining now by moving through in a more efficient effort on energy reductions as compared to your peers nationwide. Okay, this is not built in a vacuum. Certainly, Jeff provided some significant recognitions, I would certainly like to compliment Jeff, really on the vision, certainly Dr. Garza and the board for adopting this contract. There's a lot of individuals that work with us on a day-to-day basis, and this is certainly a very important list, and you always do a list and leave people out, but certainly Warren Jenkins, Mike Coughlin, Justin Moss, you know, the support center managers are just fundamental, the key relationships we're building, facility management, but at the sites themselves, the custodians, principals and staff, teachers, students, and the community in general. We've got a quick example here of just a feedback from an email that may come in multiple times a day that indicates the success of the partnership an energy specialist builds with the occupants of buildings that they maintain. The energy specialists are committed or dedicated to their own areas of facility use, so they have buildings, they manage on a regular and a significant part of their day and an ongoing basis, and it's the expectation they build really strong working relationships with support staff as well as the individuals that support those buildings, and it's significant, and it's in the sense that we've really gained significant momentum in the last four to six months in that partnership. It really makes the difference in how this becomes a long-term, sustainable program. So the future of our energy program, the last slide as we wrap up, our goal is to meet or exceed 18%. That would be a 6.6 million annualized savings. We have significant confidence that that opportunity exists here as we build more and more strength in the relationships. You know, the good stewardship of public funds is what you're here, I know that's been a big part of your day-to-day, we need to help and provide our part of that. The environmental impact is significant. I know we often talk the financials, the green side of what the outcome of the savings reductions are quantifiable, and we will be providing those to you on an ongoing and continual basis, but they are a substantial part of what we ultimately achieve in this. We're going to have to, you know, continue to identify opportunities with the electrical reductions as we adapt to your usage profile, which means, how do you use your curriculum around summer school and community events? And the more and more knowledge we gain in the partnerships with the personnel that are in those facilities, the more we're able to do what we call zone and occupancy control and not marginalize any of the actual mission of the use of those facilities. And basically, the coordination of daily use and the shutdowns associated with that, and establishing ultimately your version of your conservation culture. Our 20-plus years in this industry with some of the largest school systems in the nation indicate that they really become personalized, they have long-term viable, in many cases, 15 or 20 years, I'm still working with clients, and they're just an impressive amount of engagement at the level of just being a good fiduciary with the community's goods or savings and tax base. So that concludes this overall summary. I know you may have questions, but I may be at the end of time here.
Thank you very much, Brian. Members of the school board, we're open to questions. One thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention what Brian always tells me, because his background was a CFO before becoming COO, is he calls it, it's really truly cost avoidance, and that is the savings component of it, is that we're not incurring that expense. But anyway, really proud of the team. I know it's been a long day for you all, we're ready to answer any questions you may have about how we achieve it, or just anything you wish to ask us.
I'll tell you that the partnership, we're very familiar with other school systems across the country, they've had longstanding relationships with Synergistics, and the whole point is to establish a capacity within our system to do this on our own. So I think that's a testament to Synergistics, is that most school systems, at the end of the partnership, they've actually continued the work because they've seen such benefit to making sure that we're maximizing the dollars for utilities so that we can make sure that we can spend that money in classrooms and supporting instruction. And so this, I'm real excited about this. I'm particularly excited about the Energy Star certification for our schools. I know that, I apologize, I had to step out for just a second, I may have missed, but I believe there's a major press conference scheduled for September to announce this, and I think it's going to be a big deal with US Department of Energy maybe potentially being here to do that. So I think that's a real, I think it's also great for our community to see that we're really making this, we're taking this seriously with regard to energy conservation so that we can make sure that we're saving every penny we can, where we can, so that we can focus it back on classrooms, so.
Okay, I have Ms. Strauss, then Ms. Reed.
Thank you very much. This is really very encouraging, I know when we-
I know when we started going down this road, when we would hear from local custodians, there was a lot of questions as to whether or not we could really do this. So I'm impressed with the savings. At what point do we, have we taken most of the efficiency, tell me how, sort of in the out-years, when we learn to be as efficient as possible, that there, is there a four or a five-year mark where we kind of then plane off? I mean, how does this work going forward? In other words, we're seeing $6.6 million annual savings. Is this, how long does that go up?
What we can do is, we forecast it beyond the five-year period and the relationship with synergistic. The way it really goes is, as Dr. Garza had articulated, you know, it's really getting us to identify what the issues are. Sarah Nien has done an outstanding job with Lake Braddock Secondary, over 600,000 square-foot facility. That's a huge, it's like a small mall, small mall. But by working with the staff, by looking at, by putting data loggers in, she's been able to identify the peak and off-peak periods. We were talking earlier about how early on she has to activate the building to get it to cool down by the time the occupants come in. So all of that is part of what is going on, coupled with the engineering that we mentioned on the Westfield example, where we look at how the building operates, how it's really working. And for example, with Lake Braddock, she found that she could start up the building an hour and a half to maybe an hour during the week, but after a weekend, when the building had been off from the Sunday use, it would take, you know, two to three hours. Well, learning that, scheduling that in, and then training people in the process, it takes the period of up to the five years for the e斥ation, then it's an indoctrination where everybody has it pretty much ingrained, and it's become this systemic operation of all of us, because we know our comfort complaints, we've resolved all of the issues associated with the physical plant, we've dealt with it from an individual standpoint of comfort, and then we've looked at how we can continue to achieve that in the out-years. So the cost deferment continues on beyond the 10-year plan, and that's what the original forecast was, with, I think approximately $70 million over that period, Brian?
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to say that again. So really, the thing you were focusing on is cost avoidance, and that has to continue forever, or we, our energy costs will start to slip back up again. But I think, I think your question is, what are the total maximum possible savings, and when do we kind of plateau, and that's our kind of baseline number that we've got to stick to?
On an annualized basis?
Or over time, sort of the cost avoidance, because this is impressive. What is the cost avoidance over a five-year period, six-year period, in other words, seven, how do we, what are the real numbers now that you can see?
I guess, in the sense of a roll-up number, the 70 million over 10 is a function of that, but I think it gets to, what are the external challenges that we're going to have to overcome? So say you have a significant rate increase progressively over time. The savings is, the reason the avoidance piece is important is because we may be just trying to hold back the tide on what ultimately might be the cost of energy that's rising at the same time.
Right, which we have no control of.
That's absolutely correct.
But, but again, it's over a 10-year period, you're projecting right now a $70 million cost avoidance, 45 million, 35 million over five years, so this looks good. My second question is, and since you've done this with other school systems, where we have older buildings that have been added onto and renovated and tying in old systems, which can cause huge inefficiency in trying to tie things in. So I'm assuming that that's part of, as you study a building, it's one thing to have a brand-new building where we've put in the best systems, it's dealing with older buildings that have been retrofitted over the years.
Correct. It's really a hybrid approach, because it's not only just the buildings are gaining wings or new construction that may be more highly efficient. The counter to that, which is counterintuitive, is many of the new airflow requirements and other associated issues require more air to be pulled into a building, which compromises whether or not you can save at the same level.
Yes, I know those.
So those are the challenges we're really pushing against, is as we continue our partnership, we're working with facilities and associated more technical aspects of your personnel to try to overcome those challenges in the sense of really using these buildings at the maximum-only time period. And when we can get those buildings into what we call setback mode, you're not dealing with what may be external higher-score footage, usage, new ash ray or outside air issues that bring in and challenge your energy usage. So again, I think the savings potential is exactly what we're proposing, but we don't know what the uncertainty comes that we may be battling against and still be in the partnership with you on. And you're expanding and expanding your construction, and so we're going to stay with you on those areas of trying to maintain. We may exceed our expectations significantly, depending on what the world brings to us over the next five to six years.
Marrying human behavior with engineering skill.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you.
Embedding. Embedding. Okay, Ms. Reed, followed by Mr. Stork.
Thank you for the presentation. I used to work at EPA headquarters, so I can vouch for the fact, Energy Star is a big deal. So that's wonderful news. We should be very proud of that. When you talk about the cost avoidance, can you give us a sense for the types of things that you're talking, you've kind of alluded to some of that, but for example, we keep our lights on our turf fields on, I don't know, until midnight or something. I mean, would that be the kind of thing where you're talking about changing behaviors and maybe turning it off if we're not, they're not being used, or?
Yeah, that's a good example. We've had a lot of questions about that. The actual consumption for the lights on our stadium fields isn't as great, if you will. For example, the lights coming on at 5:00 in the morning at Robinson. At the beginning, one of the, one of the energy specialists found out that every morning when our operating engineer arrived at the facility, he turned the lights on throughout the building. And it basically was, you know, really just like an icon at that time of the morning with pitch black and then having all the lights in the building. Well, that was from a day gone by, and that person had been there over time and said, when asked, you know, why is that? Is it for safety reasons? Well, no, when we have it just in the hallways, that's enough. Why do you turn every light on? Well, that's what I was asked to do some 20 years ago. So it really is the combination, and it really is those types of things that are bigger footprint, and you're right, it is electricity. You saw on the pie chart, that's, you know, close to 80%, it is your electrical footprint. So yeah, any reductions in that area, to include stadiums, but it was more the broader culture issues that we really had.
In my last school district, I would be there, early on, I was, you know, there late at night, obviously, and I noticed all the lights in the building were on. And this drives me crazy, when you drive by one of our buildings and all the lights are on. So anyway, I found out, I would walk around then, turning off lights, and I found out that as part of the custodials, some of the custodians in the building, that was their practice, that when they finished with the room, they would go through and turn all the lights, and when they finished with the room, they would turn the light off. And that was the way they remembered which room had already been clean. So it was just a practice that we had to change.
And I would compliment one more thing. I'd say, as an example, we've had great feedback about what we call your food services area. It's a heavy-energy-demanding area of any facility, and there's just been phenomenal support and partnership with that group as we've entered into this summer. So it's again, it's not that someone's done something wrong, it's that there's just a different focus and another level of expertise that comes in and partners, and then we can do really phenomenal things.
Well, those results are quite exciting to see what you've done to date, so thank you. My last question is tying in a discussion that we had, oh, I don't know, eight hours ago, and that's regarding preventive maintenance. To what extent are any of these activities and future savings contingent upon our ability to be maintaining our systems and buildings appropriately?
Well, we still have the problem. It's helped identify, really, and underscore some of the issues I addressed eight hours ago, as you said. By having the director of FM and Justin Moss and our folks, what our technical folks working with this, it's definitely brought to light some of the issues that we have. But what it's really done is, it's made me focus on the need of the legacy control systems that we have. Our remote control systems that are dial-up and our antiquated legacy systems are one of the areas that this has really shed the light. I knew we had over nine different energy management systems, right? And out of those, we have about $11 million worth that need to be replaced. Well, it's sort of like water consumption in your home if you have a facility, a faucet or a commode, a toilet that's running constantly. It's one of those things that's just draining you, and money is going down the drain 24/7. What it's allowed us to identify is that with our energy controls, that we have a real issue with some legacy systems. Now, we've identified through working together, some potential opportunities that we have. They've got a staff member, we've asked other people from other districts to look at what we're doing. You know, we're not shy about thinking, you know, we know everything. So we're trying to find workarounds and patches in the interim, and we have made some improvements in the interim through our programming, because not only these systems dial up and slow, but the programming behind it is so complicated. It's like old versions of DOS or Lotus 123, that when you got into some of the backend programming of that stuff to make it really look up tables, it's not as effective as the technologies that today. So we, it has pointed it out, we haven't been able to make as great a gains, but it's allowing us to put more laser-like focus on targeted improvements because we're able to identify the return on that investment.
Okay, Ms. Reed, do you have any, does that cover it for you? Okay, I have Mr. Stork, followed by Mr. Moon, trying to keep things tight. We have a lot of time to catch up.
Two questions. One is, I wasn't clear what baseline source, slide number 12, what is in the baseline? Slide number 12, please?
Absolutely. See if I can move it back for you. Oh, she can do it? Okay. The baseline is effectively the 12 months, we've actually got 10 years of total billing and utility use and cost and details in your system that we've built as a database for energy.
For every single of our schools.
Every single meter, every single school. It's a very impressive, significant amount of data, and the baseline that we compare to, unless there's a decision about new construction or something that needs to vary it, is the 12-month window prior to our starting of the energy program. So that would be February of '13 to January of '14 is the standard baseline.
That's what I was confused about, because you have 2013, '14, which obviously looks like attracts the baseline, but the baseline is higher than that. So I'm confused about that. That's why I raised the question.
The blue line represents the February of '13, I'm sorry, '12. It's February of '12 to the January of '13.
So the baseline is 12 to 13?
Correct, yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke, yes.
Thank you, all right. And the second question is, we've, I've asked Kevin, just need to give us some, give me some background, at least that I could use, because communities have been asking questions about our energy savings overall with new construction, renovation, how do we do, how do we compare? And the story that Kevin's would tell me is, we have a great, we have one of the best, most efficient things that we do of all the, all the school systems in the state in terms of our renovation costs, new costs, and then what we're doing efficiency-wise and what we're building into that. How does that relate to the Energy Star certification? Are they one and the same, they're two little bit different things?
Well, you touched on two points, Mr. Stork, and yes, they're two different things. The Energy Star is based upon all of our facilities where we can identify them, but the construction program is 10% of our total facilities. So when they talk predominantly of where this report is coming out, this is not, A, haven't even begun to touch where the construction improvements and enhancements are being made.
Okay. So we really have two stories to tell. One is, one that's here now with the Energy Star and some of those certifications, but the others, and again, Kevin's given me several bullet points, I've asked him maybe to share it with the board, that have kind of show what we've been doing with our new and renovating, renovation construction about adding the same, I guess, similar efficiencies to what you're doing, although it sounds like to me there's more behavior part of this than almost an equipment part of this.
That's correct. And the physical plan, as I reported out earlier, was 30% of all of our bond monies are for sustainable initiatives.
Okay, I have Mr. Moon, and then Mr. Press.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions for the Energy Star certification. We have 116 buildings, and you said RA is the only school district which does have more buildings with the certification. How close are we to RA? I realize that RA is 10x as big as ours.
I'll let you answer that, Brian.
I do not know what their total number count is, but I'll make sure I have that.
I'm pretty sure it's like 145.
It was, I think below 150.
Something like that. I think it's pretty close. It's not that far out of.
No, 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 we're very close.
I think we can eventually be.
If it is that close, I would really love to know.
And Mr. Moon, it's now, we're now well over this.
If there's a huge discrepancy, forget it.
We're very optimistic that we're at least 140 now, but I.
Okay, so Mr. Moon, this has been updated, okay? So about 140 versus 112.
Literally, today, we were doing final certifications on some of the newest updates, and it was in the 134 with optimism that it would get into the 140s. So we're, it's an intensive assessment process to certify that requires both engineering and associated administrative work.
Third-party engineering.
Correct. And so we should know literally this week what we're getting closer to.
So once we get the, once we have a building certified, do we move on to other buildings? Is that how that works?
Some of the buildings are the older building. It's, the analysis, the engineering is the performance of the top 25% in their peer-rated groups that Brian had mentioned earlier.
Is it in succession? So do you get one building certified, then you move on to the next, or is it a process that all?
No, it's an annualized process.
But we're doing, we're doing a complete sweep of all your facilities. So it's not progressive, where there might be 70 buildings that have not been assessed yet.
Okay, my one last question is, with 18%, is that, where did that 18% come from? Is that your industry, based upon your business experience?
It was an analysis done based on what we felt your opportunity of savings was, and it is actually lower than what we've scoped in many other large school districts. In other words, that gives you the benefit of, we felt you were being progressive and efficient, but we believe also that we can exceed that. But that's what our conservative assessment is, that we can make at least 18. And as we've been now on the ground here for a year, we believe that we can exceed that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Press.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I don't really have a question so much, it's just a suggestion for the board and leadership team's consideration, and that I think we've got a really, really interesting learning opportunity here. This is an issue that many students are very, very passionate about, and I'm really excited to see this because this is, you know, really an interesting topic that a lot of students are getting heated about in a lot of senses. My question for you, or my comment, is that, is there a way that we can kind of lead by example in the sense that we bring the lessons that the division has learned and take them back into the classroom? That's my sole question and consideration.
Well, I'll tell you, part of this whole program, we didn't mention the other component, and that's where Elaine Thol and the folks in ISD have. The whole point and parcel of doing the Energy Star splash, if you will, is there are so many good things going on with the Green Flag Initiative and the Echo Schools with the National Wildlife Federation that are holistically tied to the community, student-led initiatives, that absolutely, this is going to be part of, and that's what makes what we're already doing in student outreach on Earth Day and so on, it makes it that much more pervasive, because people start talking about what we have been doing, we get recognition for what we know we're about, but then it gets the students and the young adults and the old adults working together and articulating that even further. So yeah, it really opens it much further. That's going on right now, but it opens the door for that to go even further beyond. I think, Sarah, if you're going to say something, you got to get to a mic.
I just want to share that I've been working with Robins.
You got to speak into the microphone, so.
It's just that I've been working with Robinson Secondary students, sharing some data of how much we've been saving, how much electric we've been consuming, so it's been going on. And also PTA at elementary school too, that want to learn about this. So we've been working together with students. I have students email me directly, parents email me directly, want to learn about this. So it's an ongoing, that's our goal, is to go into the classroom and also share this as well.
And I'd summarize that by saying, there's a stage at which we really work aggressively with the leadership of your organization to determine what appropriate messaging is, and it's huge, because now you've got significant data, you've started to see some of that, this is a micro capsule of what we can provide, and that becomes really powerful in both your community in general, as well as the staff and members of this organization.
Okay, we have Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Excellent question. I'm glad that we touched on that, because it is a huge part of this, is the student involvement, the opportunities for learning and all of this. So that gets me to, I just have two questions. One is, you mentioned sort of the environmental data, because we're really looking at dollars kind of here, but you are going to report out at some point what the environmental benefit is of this, and when, and what will that look like?
It's actually available real-time. The software generates the assess- on any given basis from month to month. So we can, I don't have it with me at this time, but the reporting is available to do that at any time you'd like.
Great, okay.
So we can literally generate that report at will.
Good, so maybe a next step, is that we get that at some point? Okay, my other question, just, it gets a little bit to where Mrs. Strauss was going, where when we, when we maybe flatten off a little bit in our savings, working on behavior and maybe equipment or whatever, you know, at some point, I assume that the savings begin to flatten a little bit. So have you had experience with other school systems where at that point, or you do start to think about renewables? Because I have a lot of people who look at our huge rooftops and say, oh my gosh, why don't we have solar panels all over there? And I know that the investment now doesn't make sense, but maybe at some point, it does?
Sure. Well, okay, renewables definitely are things that have to continue to be looked at. When somebody mentions solar panels, photovoltaic panels, we've looked at that many different times. The payback currently isn't there unless it's offset by some sort of grant initiative. A, B, the weight, the downweight on that space, and then who controls that space, get into nuances where some divisions have authorized a third-party provider to go ahead and use those fields for arrays of solar panels and therefore have access to their roofs. We're not really kind of about that. But the downweight and the design, we currently do not structurally build our facilities beyond the tensile strength of engineering. In other words, it would cost more to do that in advance than the thought that we might do it. It's not done yet. When people want to put solar panels and arrays around schools, I always try and get them down to where it's a tangible point, perhaps tied to one of the electric signs in the front of the school, or some of the lighting, so they can do the data reading. Nobody has to go up on the roof for safety reasons. You can actually do that around the unit in and of itself. I did that in a previous district, and it was very successful. So I'm not afraid of it at all, just we know that from the technology and the metrics, solar panels by and of themselves aren't really there. I'm also into wind and other generation components.
So I guess if, yeah, so do you guys have experience with moving to renewables?
Yeah, I would compliment everything that Jeff said, based on what you'll ultimately have as a financial decision to move with that side. What we bring is a national exposure to those many different types of renewable and green energy, so we actually can bring experience to it. We don't sell the equipment, but we can bring to you what we have, many, many accounts across the United States that have engaged in what we consider a large megawatt system. So we bring a lot of experience in a variety of ways, and it's another part of the fiduciary relationship we have with you. So we definitely would be partnered in a sense of advisors and/or recommendations of what you can see.
Okay, so if we can go to the beginning of the report where you talked about the number of FTEs, I think it's eight FTEs, so 750 days, FTE days, correct? So data in context, so are you paid out of the savings? Okay, so there is no contract cost to us upfront as FCPS, because you figure it, eight FTEs, fully loaded, I mean, that's a.
You're correct, and it's a very good question that is often asked. The FTEs and everything are included in it. The only cost was, we migrated to the Energy Cap software. We did have a watchdog, energy management software that watches our consumption on electricity, water, you know, it's all measured, but we did pay, I think, like $10,000 for Energy Cap software.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is.
It's a shared savings arrangement, so there's no cost upfront.
Right, because, well, that's actually something that we should talk about as a part of this, is that you have, you know, eight FTEs, I mean, that's going to be, you're getting close to $1 million loaded in terms of personnel, and we're able to offset that just with savings alone. So we're not paying for the contract. That's an important part of public engagement, of letting people know, you're not paying somebody to help you save money. Two is, are the anticipated, the Westfield, and I don't know what page that's on, the Westfield example, you had, for better or for worse, roughly $100,000 in savings. Is it anticipatory of the contract that that's going to be a typical savings of a high school? Was that unusual, that that's 100K, you know, roughly 100K annually? I mean, what, are we looking for a metric by building?
It is individualized. When we looked at, when we looked at Westfield, we looked at the size of Westfield, and Jack Bullock, the engineer, was really good at educating me this, because I kept saying, you know, I don't get it, you explain it to me one more time, because I don't get it. And he said, you look at the square footage of the size of facility or the physical plan of South County, it's similar, but there's a larger addition that's at Westfield than South County. So Westfield was a bit larger. But he said, based upon the way we're utilizing the systems, there's similarities that we can adopt and savings.
I'm just talking on a swag. If I go 25 high schools.
You can't just do it that way.
Are you saying that I can save $100,000, $2.5 million?
No, I wish, but no.
Some of them are, you know, some of them, the systems are being very efficient. So I think that you run into some high schools where there's not that much savings that we can garner, just because the system's being run very efficiently. Some, like Westfield, I think is an outlier, where we had a lot of opportunity. So it's really by school, by school, by school.
So I can't say, oh, you know, school by school, you know, 25 high schools, that's 2.5 million annual savings that we could be looking at. It's not necessarily, it doesn't comport. The other thing I would say with regard to the number of buildings, and this is my, like, you know, special affinity for, you know, specifics, I would talk in terms of square footage, because a building is not a building. I mean, we have Robinson, we have Lake Braddock, I mean, other school divisions that have, quote-unquote, you know, 100 buildings, they may be, you know, 100, I don't know, Franklin Sherman Elementary's or what, I mean, you know, it's, you know, we have 27 million square feet. So out of the 140 buildings, how many, you know, millions of square feet does that cover? That's another metric that makes it concrete, and that, you know, we may wind up even more exceeding other jurisdictions or other organizations. And then on the reduced cost, and somebody else was getting to it, it may have been Mr. Moon, I think disaggregating the difference between what is actually a reduced cost versus what's a cost avoidance is important, or maybe Ms. Reed had that, is I do think for the public, you know, and we've gotten into this, Dr. Garza, before about, you know, have we cut positions or have we not added positions? And it's a nuanced discrepancy, but I think people are going to be paying attention a lot more closely. So I think, you know, if we've actually avoided costs, that's one thing, but actually reducing costs is something altogether different. So that would be my recommendation. I don't know if that's really a next step, or just the next time that you put together a report, the next time we talk about this.
And I think we can show you also, over the last two budget cycles, we've actually shown a reduction in energy cost as part of our cuts. So those are real savings.
That's real save.
Those are real savings, so we can get you those.
That's a reduced cost, not a anticipated future cost avoidance. Okay, and, oh, last question, trailers, does this include trailers?
It does. We manage the, all square footage across the district. I think you have about 900, I believe, I was told today.
I mean, I've got to believe that trailers are the least efficient.
They are.
Energy wise.
Typically, generalized, they are. And then they move a lot, they're running all over your district.
Yep.
Literally.
So the get rid of trailers mission is on. Ms. McGlocken, you have a go back?
No, I have my first comment. So one thing I did want to ask is, obviously, coming into a system and, you know, trying to calibrate where you get cost savings, but also not then run the risk of the infrastructure. You know, if you cut the air conditioning in hot, humid months, you're going to end up having buckled floors in a gymnasium and, you know, any other things that can happen. So, you know, this really goes to, I guess, Jeff Plattenberg. Since we've done this, has it been pretty seamless? Has there been anything that, as a board, you think warrants are being just aware that there were some bumps in the road, and, you know, we're getting through that? Just, it helps us if people, because I'm trying to make sure, Dr. Garza, when I'm visiting my schools, I don't hear staff saying, well, you might have heard, that sounded all nice and pretty, but you should hear what's happening, you know, inside our building by cutting this. So I just wondered if anything's bubbled up to you guys saying.
Yeah, it has, and you raise a good point. I mean, at the beginning, we had a confluence of events. It was almost a perfect storm. We'd had good weather up until the week right before school started, then we had extreme heat and humidity. And when that happened, the demand that was placed upon our units, plus also the work that we were doing with the setbacks, and the early on, because the weather was good, and we were adjusting the setbacks, and they'd come on, and it didn't take that long for the building to cool down, because it wasn't hot and humid, well, the perfect turn of events. School started, kids and our teachers were in the buildings, and we had the heat and humidity. Well, what happened was, we had systems fail like crazy. Now, Synergistic took the brunt of that, okay? They really did. We had mechanical problems. Now, they had their share. Make no mistake, we all had our sinuses cleared that first day, because we're not the focus of this system, and I don't want to be. But to your point, we have had our learning opportunities, absolutely. But each time, we take this 360 review for continuous improvement, because it's imperative. And I will say this, a lot of times, the message that you may get about how the floor buckled and the correlation to, oh, it's the government that did it, oh, it's Synergistic that did it. Well, it's not that exact. The details and the facts are usually not as exciting as somebody saying, oh, it's my energy specialist, you know? But where it is, we cycle back, and that's why the relationships are huge with the principal. Because these energy specialists, and I think you've heard about how they communicate, try to get more into the classroom and so on, that relationship is crucial. And I can tell you that since the beginning to where we are now, the secondary principals have, especially a couple of friends of mine that are, you know, give me good feedback, they have told me how it's amazing how through the coordination and communication, it's been amazing, the improvements that are made.
Yeah, I would say only the beginning of school, and then I think, you know, you and your team really ramped it up to help our principals understand, you know, if there were, if there were experienced issues, what were those issues? And I think, as Jeff pointed out, the relationships have been built since that time. I only hear good feedback now.
That's great, that's great.
Now, where we might run into situations, you know, I'm confident Jeff and his team and the Synergistic staff will be right on it, but I think it's, I think we've come a long way with the relationship.
No, thank you. And, you know, that way, if you get an outlier here or there, you can put it into context that, in the grand scheme, it's been very limited, and you've had the continuous improvement along with, you know, figuring out how to, you know, mitigate any issues. Thanks.
Okay, just going back on any next steps, I think with the, I don't, what would you call it, the gas output mitigation report or something?
Yes, the, it's a carbon footprint, it's kind of a green report.
A green report. If there's just a point at which, like a snapshot report, because you said it can be pulled at any time, whenever it makes sense, you know, I don't know. So a snapshot green report to the board.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, was there anything else? I don't recall anything else. Okay. An hour and 18 minutes later, we're going to call this work session closed. Thank you.
So we'll take a two-minute break for the final work session for today.